Well, thanks for joining today. Talking Politics in Western Pennsylvania. This is the first program out of the new studio and I'm glad you could be with us. Also, our special guest today is Larry Maggi. He is the Washington County Commissioner and we have a ton of questions. Larry, so good you could join us today.
Good seeing you Bill, thanks for having me.
Well, like I said, under the transparency, I did tell you a couple of the topics that we're going to talk about so you're not blindsided. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows this is not a game show. We have some issues that are going on in the county right now. Some issues that may change the county as we know it today. And I want to first talk to you about that. You know, there are a lot of people who seem to be against it because they don't like change. But we want to know from your point of view, because you are one of the two commissioners that apparently are supporting this change. We want to know why. We want to know what drove it at this time to possibly be on the ballot here in November, well, to be on the ballot, it is going to be from what I understand, on the ballot in November for a potential change of the county. So this is one of the easiest programs I'm going to be doing because you're going to be doing a lot of the talking. Larry, it's up to you.
Thanks, thanks Bill, and thanks for having me. I appreciate getting that opportunity to talk a little bit about what's going on. And what's sad right now, there's so much misinformation out there. And I'm sure this will be one of many of trying to explain what exactly is going on. First of all, we're not changing the government. We're giving the people a chance to study it. There's going to be commissioners, the two of the three voted to put this referendum on the ballot in November. And what that means is, there's going to be a referendum. Do you want a government study commission? The people will have a choice to decide whether they want to study government commission. And that commission will be elected by the people. Now, if the majority of the people say yes, then they'll go on to the next question. The next question is, you will vote for 11 people to be on that study commission.
Well, let me ask you right there. That's something that somebody, everybody seems to be having a problem with. If you vote no, you still have to vote for 11 people.
Correct.
But you have to vote. You can't skip that. And that's, like I said, whenever I voted this last election down here in Venetia, whenever it said you can vote for up to three, and I voted for one, it wouldn't let me go to the next step without voting for three. Which is not right. If I want to plunk my vote, that should be there. Why is it mandatory that you vote for 11 people?
Well, my understanding, it's not. You can plunk for one or two. That surprises me that happened because that happens a lot. Sometimes you choose not to vote, or you have that right not to vote in that particular office. But my understanding, we expect, there could be 30 or 40 people on the ballot to run for that study commission. Now, back up a little bit, that first question...
Yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. That's fine. That first question will be, do you want a government study commission? You can vote yes, or you can vote no. But if you vote yes or no, you still have to go on and vote for, you can vote for up to 11 people that will be listed there. Now, if the majority of the people say no to a government study commission, it's done. And then, that's a moot point, your vote on that. Those people will not be...
Has this been done before? Has it been looked at before?
Yes, it was. In 2001, we did this, and I supported it then. I was elected as a sheriff. I was a sheriff when it happened. I testified before the study commission. And they voted to study. They voted for, at that time, there was only nine commissioners they chose. Nine study commissioners. They were on that ballot, and they studied it, and they chose to keep it the same. Now, at that point, as I said, I was a sheriff. I was interviewed at one of their meetings, and I supported that situation. And now, after you get to the second question, you have an option to vote for up to 11 people. There'll probably, we suspect, there'll probably be 30 or 40 people who are on there. A lot of people circulating petitions now. We won't know until August 23rd, when those petitions have to be in by the people who are circulating it. It's nonpartisan. These petitions, all you have to do is be a registered voter. You don't have to, it doesn't matter which party. If you're circulating a petition, a Democrat, a Republican, or an independent can sign that petition. Because, trying to keep it nonpartisan. When those people are listed, those, I'll say 30 people, or maybe more, maybe less that are listed, there won't be any party next to it. It'll be just what area you're from. If it's Peters Township, North Trebane, Canonsburg, whatever the case, that's the only thing that will be listed.
Okay, so if people that may hear this between now and August 23rd, if they say, "Well, I'm interested in doing that," they should get their petitions where?
You have time. You can go online, and go to the Washington County website, or you can go to the election office on the second floor of the county building and pick up a packet. You still have time. You need 200 signatures. And you get the signatures, you fill out the paperwork, and you have to have them back into the election office by August 23rd. But you still got time, there's plenty of time left to do it if you choose to do it.
Okay, I'll try not to interrupt anymore.
That's okay. That's all right.
What is the impetus now that changed it from the last election? Why did this come up now to be a question for the people of the county?
Well, one of the things I want to stress, it's to study the government. It is to study our county form of government. And what that means is, these 11 people who the people will vote for, will study it. Now, they can study it, they can come back and say, "Guess what? We like this. This committee, these commissioners," I don't want to get commissioners mixed up, but the study commissioners say, "We think it's working. No change. It's done." They got nine months after November 2nd election, they got nine months to study it. It's done. Or they can come and say, "Well, you know what? There's some issues here. This is a form of government we had since 1781. Maybe they need to tweak it a little bit." They can do a lot. Actually, Peters Township's a home rule municipality. They went home rule in 1976, I believe. But they're a home rule municipality, so they were one of the first. Right now, there's eight states, or eight counties in Pennsylvania that are home rule. And what started this? What really brought it to the forefront? As I said, in 2001, I supported studying it, and I supported making some changes. Didn't happen, respect to what the voters said, we moved on. Past years, there's been some issues at the county level, which was widely publicized, that happened, and the public was outraged. Several years ago, in 2018, we had a clerk of courts who stole $96,000. That person was being investigated, subsequently investigated, convicted. He's serving his sentence now. But there was nothing, nothing we could do about it. This person, he was tried, not tried yet, but he was investigated, he was charged after it was found out at the county level. The systems we had in place picked it up, the audits picked it up. We contacted the Pennsylvania State Police and the Attorney General's office. They investigated, they filed charges, he was convicted. But this person, for over a year, was in that office. There was absolutely nothing the county commissioners could do, or the courts.
And he was being paid...
He was being paid...
After he was convicted from stealing from that office?
He was being paid $98,000.
We'll be talking about that too, because of the fact that I find it impossible to believe that he was given over 100 years to pay that back.
Absolutely, and we can talk about that later. But that really brought it to the forefront. People come up to the commissioners, "What's the matter with you? Why aren't you doing anything about this? Why aren't you getting rid of him? Why aren't you removing him from office?" We couldn't. We could not. He was elected by the people. And the only way to get rid of him at that point is to impeach him. And no legislators wanted to touch that. And nobody wanted to touch it. The legislators had to introduce it to impeach him, and that wasn't going to happen. And so, anyways, that brought to the forefront the issues we had. And also, the fact that some of the offices right now are filing offices. They're part of the courts. And maybe in 1781, they needed to be elected, but today, their duties are, they're clerks. They're filing for the courts. That brought it to our attention. Maybe we need to look at our government and see if we need to make some changes. We're in the 21st century right now. We have technology. We have instantaneous information, and maybe we need to look to see if we can tweak it. That's going to be up to the people. It's not going to be up to me or the commissioners. It's literally, once this goes on the ballot, it's out of our hands. It's out of the commissioners' hands. A lot of people say, "Well, the commissioners want to change government. They want to have more power." That train's out of the station right now. There's nothing we can do. They can come back and say, "You don't need commissioners. We want a county exec." Or they can come back and say, "We want a different form." Or they can come back and say, "There's nothing wrong with this system. It has its checks and balances, and we'll keep it the same." It's not up to us. It's going to be up to those 11 people. But those 11 people will study it. If they decide, if they decide they need some changes, it has to go back on the ballot again. If that 11 people say, "Yeah, you know what? There are some issues here, and we need to tweak this a little bit." And whatever they do, if they make any changes, it will go back on the ballot the following year, and the people will again get to vote on whether they want to accept that or not. If they accept it, the changes will be made. If they don't accept it, we keep the same form of government. So it's pretty, it's out of our hands.
Yeah, well, I couldn't help but notice that you and the other longstanding commissioner are for it. And the younger commissioner, I think he was sort of talked into a long-term opportunity here, and he's looking at a very short opportunity that does not provide a retirement in that for him in the long or the short term. I noticed he voted against it, which I was sort of amazed that he did that based on his partner going along with it. But, yeah, this is, so many, so many questions brought up by so many people. And I'll give you, this is a message put out by the Republican Party. What a surprise. Checks and balances are lost. Higher taxes, just like Allegheny County, eliminates elected row offices and gives all the power appointment to the county executive. Hmm, I'm not sure, you know, Allegheny County seems to have a dual system. The city has their system, and the county has their system. The city-county building, which is interesting because both organizations are in the same function, or in the same facility. I find it interesting that the Republican Party seems to be against this idea, whenever their commissioner is so much in favor of it. You know, as you all know, I used to be the chairman of that, and I don't really give a whole lot for their opinions anymore. But the bottom line is, it's funny that one party seems to be against it, and the other party, I haven't heard from yet. But like I said, the thing that interested me on one of the things that came out here was, you must vote for 11 of these commissioners and three alternates. And as I said, as a person who usually doesn't vote the whole party line ticket or anything anymore, I go with the people that I think are going to be able to do the job. And if it says, "Vote for at least three," and there's six people on, I may only pick one. And so, you're telling me that I can still do that process of plunking for the people that I want versus that, "Oh my God, I don't know these people, but I have to vote for them anyhow." Okay, well, that's good to know. The people, once again, by the time this gets out, it'll probably be a couple days, or at least a day, people will still have until, really, the 22nd to get out there and get their petition signed, and get it into the county by the 23rd.
If I could just add something, Bill.
Sure, please do, please do.
One of the things that's important in this study, and there's going to be a lot of opinions, and I get that, but right now, it's out of the hands of the political parties. It's out of the hands of the politicians. It's in the hands of the voters right now. We put it on the ballot. The voters will decide. Not the Democrats, not the Republicans, not the independents, not the politicians. The voters will decide it. The other good thing, one there, that I really think's important, and people say, "Oh, I can't believe you're saying that," but you can put term limits in there. You can set salaries. You can also, term limits, set salaries, and you're going to reduce costs with this. Now, people say, "Oh, Maggi, you've been there..." You know, I was a state trooper 25 years. I had a real job before I got into politics. And I was a sheriff, and now I'm going 18, you know, my fourth term was county commissioner. You're going to say, "Oh, you're talking term limits now." I follow the rules. If other people aren't going to follow the rules in term limit, it's like the speed limit. I go through Peters Township, it's 35. I go 35, and it goes up to 45, I'll maybe 46, 47. But I follow the rules, and right now, there's no rules. And Allegheny County, I'm proud of Washington County, I never liked to look towards Allegheny County and compare, but they got term limits for their, if people choose the county exec, they may not choose that. There's term limits there. They got three terms. And this committee and the people can decide on that. And I, that may be surprising coming from me who served, but if I was told I only had two terms, guess what? I only served two terms. And I follow the rules. Is the other elected officials, both parties, going to follow the same rules? If you're going to self-impose? I don't think so.
Well, there's another question that was brought up. Okay. If this position comes available, are you going to run?
It's too premature to talk. I hate to sound like a politician, but it's...
Well, you are, isn't it?
I am, I am. But it's too premature. I'm not sure what they're going to end up doing. And I, quite honestly, I've not taken a stand on what I think should be done. I want people who are open-minded, both parties, to get on that committee and really study it. We may have the best forum right now, but I want open-minded people to say that.
I'm laughing because you're asking for people that may be political to be open-minded. And you're like, "Okay, yeah, that doesn't happen often."
I know.
Well, let's move on. Let's move on. I thank you very much for those answers. We brushed upon the situation that Frank Scandell's guilty plea, all right, of taking $97,000. I think the part that irritates crap out of me, to be honest with you, that the penalty was seven years probation, with the first two years spent on electric home monitoring and performing 150 hours of community service. But he has 100 years to pay back a fine that he stole while he was representing the people. I just, to me, you know, like I said, in my mind, clamp him in chains and put him in prison now for five to 10 years, and then, you know, get the money. The people, that's the people's money. It wasn't him. He shouldn't have a lax time to be able to pay it back. I mean, that's just me. But, you know, I'm all for bringing back the noose and everything else. So you can't really count that as much. But, yeah, like I said, I find it almost appalling that he had 100 years to pay back that money, whenever it was taken, while he was an officer and elected official. And like I said, it's like, I'm sorry to say, it's like a policeman who steps over the bounds. If you're a cop and you step over the bounds, and you know you're doing wrong, you should be held more accountable than Joe Schmo, who doesn't have a clue about the law and does something. And I have a real problem whenever I see the court system bending over backwards to appease people for whatever, a friend, or relative, or whatever. And God knows, we have enough over them in this community. But I have a problem with that. I have a problem whenever, you know the guy's not going to live for 100 years. Where are you going to get the money after he dies? Where is the rest of the, the money that he stole? When does that get, is it against the estate? You know, do we finally get a check? What happens? But anyhow, that's a situation, once again, and he was a row officer. He was a row officer that was elected by the people to do the people's work, and he stole from them while he was getting paid rather well. The county pays pretty well. And so, he was doing a pretty good job there, as far as the cash he was getting. Second Amendment.
Okay, talk a little bit about...
Oh, please do, yes.
You're absolutely right. And you have every reason, everybody has every reason to be upset. You break the public trust. And I was a state policeman for 25 years. You are held to a higher standard. When you're an elected office holder, you're held to a higher standard. And you have the public trust, and that's one of the most valued trusts you can have because people put you in there, whether you're a policeman or what position, they put you in there and expect you to behave, and behave a little better than the average person. And especially in this case, when you do something like this. I mean, it was just, it's just a punch in the nose of every taxpayer and every citizen in our county. And when this happened, it was so frustrating. There was absolutely nothing we could do about it. It became a campaign issue. It became a big issue out there. Why aren't the commissioners doing anything with this person? We had checks and balances in place. It worked. The controller found discrepancies. He looked into it. He found out that these funds were diverted, stolen.
Sure.
And he come to the commissioners. The three commissioners met immediately. We contacted Attorney General and the State Police to do an investigation. And the rest is history. It's in the paper, what happened. The whole time he was there, he collected a salary and benefits. He collected health care on the taxpayers. The whole time, there was nothing anybody could do, other than, as I said a little earlier, impeach him, and then the legislators were going to touch that at the point. Now, he lost the election. He still ran. He still almost won.
See, that's...
And almost won.
He was convicted, and he almost won. That's the stupidity of the American voter, that they don't pay attention to the process as well as the job. His job is to do one thing. He failed to do that. Not only did he fail to do it, he stole during that period of time. And what makes me mad than anything is the fact that after he was convicted, he stayed in that office getting a paycheck for an additional year. And how, I mean, how could the public trust him? How could the courts trust him? But they left him there. And that's what really...
But we couldn't do nothing.
I understand the commissioners' hands are tied because he's an elected official, and as you said, no, politicians, I think that they're sometimes scared to do anything about it because they don't want to be held to the same standard. Okay, and that's like I said, you know, I've had the opportunity to be a state representative for the party, be the county chairman and everything else. And the more and more I get involved, or got involved, not get involved anymore, but got involved in politics, I started seeing a lot of that. That they didn't want to be held to the same standard, they want to hold someone else to. So they will, in fact, back off. And it's scary that we can't expect that our representatives are doing the best for us, whenever they take that attitude. Yeah, and that's like I said, this is, this is just, the more and more I read about this, this is just one of those things that I just couldn't understand.
What we did do, at taxpayers' expense, we had to assign another person to make sure the money was coming. Now, we did take steps to prevent any further theft. The courts took over the account by a court order, which most folks didn't know at the time. And we had to assign an individual to basically look over the paperwork before it was submitted.
So while he was getting paid, you had to assign someone else to get paid, to in fact, watch that he didn't steal anymore, but in fact, the process was flowing the way it was supposed to. But once again, that's on the taxpayer's dime.
Taxpayers pay for it.
And that's, like I said, it's, I can't understand. And it comes up with the courts. I can't understand. I can understand if a person's down on their luck and they steal a loaf of bread, I don't, you know, like the old days, I don't want to cut off their hands. But, on the other hand, whenever you're in a position, you're being paid to a job that you accepted that pay, and you're stealing from them.
A good pay.
Yeah, good pay. I mean, it's not like, you know, it's not like nickels and dimes. You know, it was a good pay for a county row office. He ran for that office. It wasn't like a case somebody walked out and said, "Hey, why don't you sit over here on this desk?" He actually ran. So he knew the history of it. He knew what was being paid and everything else. But to in fact, have him steal, and then be convicted, and then keep his job, is something that I can't understand. How the system allowed that to ever happen? You know, it's just...
And that's why we want to look at, how can we change that next time?
Well, I think, you know, I think that's the point that people don't understand, that there is something that was the impetus to in fact, make this start to happen. The wheels start to turn again. Like you said, in 2002, this was looked at and failed to get the support. But now, like I said, a recent case like this is something that I think that people can understand. They can understand, and not only understand, but possibly get behind. I still don't know that I'll vote for all 11 people, but, you know, the bottom line is... Auditor finds significant issues in the Register-Wills office. Once again, another row office that was brought in. The person who's in there now was brought in, whatever the Republican Party took a lot of those positions from the Democratic candidates who were holding them. This is unique because of the fact that, the more I start looking at this, of course, I'm getting second and third-hand information off the Observer, or the CBS, or whatever. But the bottom line to this was, there seems to be a lot of bantering back between, well, the Register-Wills and the courts. And, I mean, the courts seem to be a major player in this whole thing because of this issue of the clerk of courts not being removed from his position once he is found to be a crook. This position that somebody found significant issues, and I'm still not really sure, when I read this, I'm really not sure who found the significant issues. But I'm not sure if they happened during his period of time, or if they happened before and were carried over. Like I said, but I see at the back of this, they're calling each other names and everything, which I'm not going to go into now. But Davis, well, Roman and Davis both, according to the headlines here, lob accusations at the Washington County Commissioners. Now, as row officers, how are they blaming you? You know, how are they blaming you, another elected official, for their audits being found badly?
Well, you can, we can say anything, and, you know, in fairness, we don't control them. They're elected. Those row officers are all elected by the people. They don't answer to the commissioners. All we do is, we have, they have 1620 rights. They can hire and fire who they want. The commissioners have no say in the running of their office. The only say we have is, we control their budget. But the courts say, precedents say, we have to give them adequate money to run their offices. So we have no say with them, and they basically can do what they want. And so, when there's issues with the court, which we've been advised by President Judge John DeSau of some issues with the courts and problems they've been having, he advised us, just as information, because there is nothing we can do. I know when we, when the new row officers came in, we sat down, we had the county solicitor, we had the HR people come in, we had the whole staff come in to kind of tell them, give them information on what's going on, and what you can do, and what you can't do because of all the HR rules and all that. So we tried to set them up to be successful. But that's the problem right now. Some of the things that are going on are affecting... Uh, but that's the problem right now. Some of the things that are going on are affecting the courts. They, they couldn't get, they couldn't get documentation on a recent homicide trial from one of the offices. One of the offices without throwing bombs and, one of the offices erroneously filed a judgment against a county health, uh, care facility and three individuals on behalf of a death row defendant. Erroniously. And these are things that are going on, and the judges caught it. But that's just to name a few. Uh, there were several documentations that the federal courts had to send. Demanding information that, that they were required to have, that they didn't have. But it was just little things like this that doesn't rise to the level of criminality or anything like that, but it just are issues. The courts are really having a difficult time functioning right now, trying to get paid for work. And, and the pandemic's not helping it. But nevertheless, the courts still gotta do their job, and they got jobs to do. So without, you know, pointing a finger, different row officers, there was just a lot of issues there that's going on. Uh, some of the people who are paying fines are being double billed because, uh, of an issue at the clerk of courts. And the, the judges had to set in and set a court order telling that office on how to handle this. Uh, and if they don't follow that quarter, they'll be found in contempt of court. So that's the stuff that's going on now.
That was an interesting part. I, I was reading here that the state auditor general came in and told this row office that they have to do this, but the court said, if you do that, I'll hold you in contempt. Uh, I, I, the right hand doesn't seem to know what the left hand's doing here. And that's just, it's concerning as a citizen of the community and someone who likes to believe I'm a little more politically connected than most. I can't understand this. I, it doesn't make sense to me. And that's, that's why I ask you here today, because of the fact that this stuff needs to be cleared up. So the, the, the person out there can understand, one, that the county's being run well. Two, that the, the court system's being run well, and the row offices are being run well. Two, in fact, and I don't care if it's just somebody who's never had any dealings with the courts or anything else. Or if it's somebody who's involved in the courts every week for one reason or another. That they in fact have, uh, some remedy to make this right. You know, they, they should. Now, you said, if you're gonna be billed twice for a fine that you already paid, what's going on? You know, that somebody should be saying, oh, I got the check, mark this off in this blank, and that's it. But if they're not doing that, why?
Well, we, again, they're individually elected. We have no say. And unfortunately, the courts have to address it. We can't, the commissioner can't address it because they hire, fire, and run their offices because they're independently elected. And that's one of the things this study commission can look at. Do those offices need to be independently elected? That's up to the study commission, not to some politician. And can they be done by maybe the courts or the commissioners? It could be either way. Do they appoint these people? And they appoint one person instead of four to run all four offices? That's up to the study commission. They can say, yeah, it's not a good idea, save money. And you guess what? If, if somebody in there steals money, you can fire that person. Or you can put them.
Well, not in Washington County. You pay him front of the year.
For a year, yeah.
And that's, like you said, this is what makes, if it's not for the county commissioners to oversee, but the courts can oversee it, why aren't the courts overseeing it?
Well, they are. They're, but it's a, they can't.
But they left him convicted for a year collecting money. That's not oversight.
Remove him. They could not remove him. When we say convicted, he was charged and he was pleading. He was never technically convicted, let's say, so he can be removed from office. But if he was convicted before he left office, now he was charged, he was already agreeing for a plea. And for all intents and purposes, he was convicted, but he never, the technical part, never signed a document, I plead guilty. And all intents and purposes, even when he'd done that, we looked, what can we do? What if he wins this election? What can we do? The legislators would have had to impeach him. If he was elected by the people after, he could have been in jail. We've seen that where people's been in jail and still serve. We looked into it, and he would have had to been impeached by the Senate to be removed. Even if he won the election, which he come close to.
See, that, that to me, like you said, we're, we're people's heads, you know? What, what are they thinking with, and if they go into the ballot box, know that he's, he's a convicted person or committed a crime as he did? To vote for him again, is that just family members looking for, you know, something? I, you know, I, I just can't understand it. I don't know. I, if, if.
And, and that's one of the reasons, this can happen again. I, I mean, it's probably happened in the past, and it maybe never came to surface, but it can happen again. That's what we want this study commission to look at. How do we keep this from happening? What can we put the steps in guard? Now, we had, our system caught it. We caught it with an audit. I mean, we caught it right away. But after you catch it, there's a process you have to go through. If that person was hired or fired by the courts or the commissioners or jointly to take the politics out, at that point, hey, guess what? You're fired or you're, you're suspended with, without pay until we get this rectified. Couldn't do nothing like that. People, the taxpayer still paid the salary, still paid the benefits, and he didn't come to work. So if that's not enough reason to look at our system of government, I'm not sure what is.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just, to me, just, I, I can't understand it. You know, being a social studies teacher, whenever I'm sitting there talking to the students when, when I taught eighth grade, social studies, it was a, you know, never give up your freedoms. Fight for them, never give up. And a lot of the, the teachers in that school said, why are you telling the kids that? I'm like, what are you talking about, you know? Uh, but that's, you know, like you said, there's, there's people out there that think you should give up everything, you know? If, if they promise to make society safer, you know? But this is, this is not happening. This is not making it better. It's not making everyone's life better. If you can steal from me and get paid while you're doing it, get paid after you're found convicted, and I'm still paying you. And then, I don't know who came up with that hundred year thing. That, I think that bothers me more because like I said, the idea that he, he stole and he only has to pay back a thousand dollars a year is irritating as anything. He should be selling his car, selling his jewelry, selling his, you know, dog. I don't care. Get the payment. Get it into the county. Make the county whole.
I agree, Bill. I totally agree.
I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I just couldn't, um. Looking at the elections, okay? It seemed like Commissioner Ari Vaughn was looking at, to look at a, um, opportunity to go and see and count the elections and, and double check everything. And then all of a sudden, she seemed to flip on that and said, no, we, we do fine. As a person who ran a public office, ran in public office, um, I always had a concern. And, and I met with you one time and told you that there was a number of people who came to me during the Washington County Fair, while we had our booth there, and told me that they had applied a number of times, uh, for voting. And every time they applied, it came back, uh, Democratic Party, even though that's not what they applied for. We sat down and discussed that, and, and I have to admit, after that discussion, it got better. Okay? My concern was at that time, there was a person running that office who was also running for office. And that to me is not necessarily non-biased. You know, whenever you have a person who is running for office and also running the election office of the county, it did not make me feel real comfortable about being, one, a voter, two, a citizen, thinking that what, what's going on here, you know? Uh, and, and, you know, I know he was probably in that position before he started running for office. So it's, once again, it's difficult to get him out of there. But the bottom line is, there, there are issues. And there's still issues in our country today about the two thousand and twenty election. Like I said, I had a problem whenever, I, I mentioned earlier, whenever I went to vote, and I only wanted to vote one of three people, and it wouldn't allow me to. That's a concern. That's a concern about that machine. And I reported it. I don't, I've never heard anything back from it, you know? How many, if there were issues, I had issues earlier, uh, years. Whenever I tried to vote one way and it, it actually popped up something different, and I reported it. We never hear about what happens. We never hear about what happens. But whenever I see somebody who says, yeah, we're gonna look into that, and, oh, no, we're not gonna look into that anymore because I really believe our system works. Well, these are the same machines, from what I understand, that have been questioned in practically every state in the Union. That this company, uh, I, I believe, maybe they were from Spain, I'm not sure, that, that got these, these equipments somehow through most of the states in the Union. But to go outside of our country and get machines from other countries to run our elections concerns me, you know? And now I'm seeing in Arizona, they are having problems subpoenaing the company to give them their records. Why? If it's all up above board, why are you having problems? Why is this the state attorney general saying that they're going to follow actions against any county who looks at their, their elections too much? None of that makes sense to me. If everything is fair and above board, none of that makes sense.
Yeah. Well, we had an election review committee, uh, we put together, and they came up, and they did a lot of good stuff. We got a lot of people off the rolls who, the voting rolls who weren't eligible. I mean, they were either deceased or, uh, weren't still living in the area. And we did, were able to clean that up. Uh, we tried to address questions, uh, that arose. Just simple issues of how to count and make it more transparent on election night. Got into a bigger room, videotaping it, uh, security. We were able to do a lot of that. But you're right, our, our right to vote, the right, the sanctity of that vote is the most important thing we do. And I, I consider as a county commissioner, the most important thing we do is oversee the elections. If you don't have a free, uh, election process, our democracy is doomed. And, and that's why it has to be transparent. It has to try to make it as, as workable as we can for, for everybody. So, uh, we, we tried to address some of those issues, uh, with this, we tried to make this election review committee bipartisan. So that they could have a, a open discussion about it. And we did address a lot of, lot of issues and concerns. So I, I know there, there's questions, and I know, uh, the problem we ran into was if, if we allowed any third party person to look at the machines, then the state would decertify them. And that's in about a three million dollar bill for the taxpayers to get new machines, whatever that is. So that, that was problematic. So, uh, we did the best we could for the least amount, you know, to get our value. Didn't cost taxpayers a lot of money to make sure.
You know, one, one of, one of the issues that I have is, is not necessarily unique. But of course, voter ID, I'm, I'm all for it. But you know, if it was unique, if I only asked people to get voter IDs to vote, that'd be one thing. But on the other hand, excuse me, if you wanna cash a check. In New York City, if you wanna go on the subway, you have to show ID. If you wanna go on a plane, you have to show ID. If you wanna cash a check at Giant Eagle, you have to show ID. Why do those lower things in my world require IDs whenever we don't require in the voting booth? You know, it, it just seems to me that I should know it's you voting, okay? How do I know it's you and not some guy, uh, five miles away who comes in and pretends to be you? You know, I, I should, I should have that confidence in that voting that, and, and for these people who say, well, you're slamming the minorities. You know what? That is a crock because of the fact that I'll guarantee that if you went out into the minority community and asked them if they had IDs, ninety-nine point ten percent would in fact show you an ID of some sort that could be used in a voting booth. So you know, these people, well, you're trying to keep minorities, absolutely not. I am not. But I'm trying to keep their, their vote meaningful. And it, and it has to be that people appreciate that these folks have the right and the integrity to vote the way they want to, not the way somebody else wants them to. And I, I, that's something that bugs me.
All right, and I don't disagree with you. I, I always show my ID when I go to my voters. I'm in Buffalo Township, it's small pole. Everybody, I've lived there my whole life. Everybody knows me. Got my driver's license out. They all, Larry, but as a, as a trooper, as a police officer, I always knew the importance of identification.
Sure. I mean, I spent twenty years in the military, besides being in the politic aspect here locally. Uh, people knew me, but the bottom line, and I grew up here, so a lot of the old time people knew me. But the bottom line is, it's not degrading me to ask me to show an ID and so they can match my signature maybe with the signature they have on file. Well, let's move along to the last topic. Washington County voted to pass Second Amendment sanctuary. This is of course something that I'm all for, because I believe that we have the, should have the right to protect ourselves. We're now looking at a country in Afghanistan who are being crushed by the Taliban because those people have nothing to protect them with. You know, I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased that this happened. I, I would think, um, seeing that unanimously voted to support this issue, um, I was hoping, and I knew from, from knowing you, that this is something that you would probably agree with.
Yeah, I, we, we, March, I believe it was first of March, we, twenty twenty-one, we passed a, a resolution. Uh, we're one of six counties, I believe, in Pennsylvania that has done that.
I know Westmoreland was one of them.
Yeah.
They, they voted for that for a while ago, and we were hoping.
Green County, I think, has. And, uh, you know, for a lot of different reasons, gun sales went up last year in Pennsylvania. And, uh, it's, especially southwestern Pennsylvania, that's part of our, our heritage. And that's part of who we are, uh, about hunting and fishing and our Second Amendments, right? So that, that was important to the commissioners, important for, especially at, at this time to do something like that. Uh, we, basically, it, it says that we won't enforce any laws that are unconstitutional or against, uh, Pennsylvania or the United States Constitution.
I'm starting to think that politicians don't know the Constitution and never read it. Uh, and like I said, I just saw that they passed a one point two trillion dollar, and, and the media keeps saying, and five hundred and seventy million or a billion of that is gonna be spent on transportation and water and, and internet. And, but they don't tell you about the other seven hundred billion dollars where it's going. They, they make, you know, one point two trillion, but only this much. And, and that, don't pay attention to that. There's nothing to see here. Um, one of the things that I found interesting, um, there was in Oregon, it seems to be going down the toilet rapidly. Um, uh, there was a challenge to a county that, that did the Second Amendment, and the judge threw it out as, and, uh, against the Constitution. So I was really glad to see, he was a federal judge, and I was really glad to see that that, in fact, action happened in a place where Black Lives Matter seemed to be taking over, and they seem to be the police now because of the fact that there's so many policemen that are quitting their jobs and leaving Oregon, and I don't blame them, after seeing what's happened to them in the past. But the, the bottom line is, I was really pleased to see that the Second Amendment is being protected here in Washington County, and, uh.
Yeah, it's important to our citizens. We got, we got an active group who are, uh, involved with hunting firearms and for hobbies, and we, as you know, you're a veteran yourself. Uh, we have the highest percentage of veterans in any place in the, the nation here in southwestern Pennsylvania. And a lot of them, uh, are, are sporting people with, with handguns and, and long rifles and weapons. And, and that's important, and we want to protect those people's rights.
You know, one, one of the, you talk about western Pennsylvania and the military, one of the interesting things I found, I had to go pick up a Medal of Honor winner one time for a program that we were doing at the base.
Wow, what an honor.
You talk about, he was only a little guy like this, and I'm thinking, what, what could he have done? Until I read his, his story, and oh my God, it was just like, you know, is he superhuman? He, I mean, he was only about five foot two, uh, but he, he had a story, he had a hand-to-hand combat with thirteen enemy. Uh, he saved the lives of twelve other soldiers. Uh, he waited all night with three bullet wounds in himself and still defended. I'm sitting there going, Jesus, you know, this is the kind of, this is the person we should be looking up to. But I've also found out during that time that western Pennsylvania has the highest concentration of Medal of Honor winners in the country. Which I did not know up to that point, but you know.
Yeah, I, I, I'd heard that once before, Bill, and, and, but you're, you're right, we, we do. Yeah, I I I'd heard that once before, Bill, and and but you're you're right, we we do. Per capita, I believe, one of the highest concentrations, I hadn't read that once, but that's quite an honor, but we we do have a lot of veterans. Our southwestern Pennsylvania is fiercely patriotic. And that's something that that I'm very proud of, we we both both served and we're very proud of our service, but. We we have a good group of citizens who. Believe in their country.
Well, you know, another thing that most people in Peter's Township doesn't understand, don't understand. That I was the the president of the Arabian Horse Club. For Pennsylvania and. Peter's Township had the largest per capita horse ownership in the seventies and eighties. And the only place that beat us out was Louisville, Kentucky.
I did not know that.
Yeah, I I just like you said, you know, I I had a horse when I was young and you know, I enjoyed, I was telling, I actually. Took it to school a couple of days, just to, you know, just to ride it because I was being stubborn. But you know, it was, it was a fun time back then, we we had a good time, but I I've. Like you said, through the information that I I gleaned, uh, whenever I was in charge of that organization, the fact that they. Had had the largest per capita horse ownership, I I just like, well, you know, this is something special. But you look around here now, I mean, there's only a couple of horse farms still left, I'm sorry to say, they keep on throwing these. Inner city communities into Peter's Township where they're only ten feet apart and the streets are only sixteen feet wide. And it meets the minimum requirements, which I'm really fed up with, but the bottom line is, somebody else has to deal with that anymore, not me or Monica.
Washington County is, we're like sometimes one, two and three, uh, in the equine industry. And in the state, Lancaster sometimes because of the Amish and all that, beat us out, but our big one is the Meadows. A lot of horses are boarded at the fairgrounds, so we are, we have a big equine industry here.
Well, as you know, I worked for Lou Rosito who owns Empress Arabian and. At one time, my daughter and his daughter were going to shows and that together and it was funny because. There was a program about a Saudi prince who had like seventy four horses. And she was really impressed by that until all of a sudden she realized that Mr. Rosito had over a hundred and then she said, well, there you go then. There you go, but anyhow, Larry. I've come to the end of boring you with my questions.
It was a great interview, Bill, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you 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 explaining the stuff that needed to be explained, I think that once. The audience hears why this is coming down and the reason behind it, because most people don't read the paper, I'm sorry, it's it's usually a dead thing. But the the, uh, whenever they see and hear a commissioner like yourself coming out and expressing. Uh, the bare bones of the the workings of this whole thing, it makes so much sense. And it gives them then the the information and. You know, like I said, if they wanna get on there, get out and get your petition, get on that that board, see if you're elected. You know, do it now, but do it within the next couple of days, not, you know, not like, well, I'll do it at the end of the month cuz that doesn't work. But anyhow, Larry, so very, very glad you came on to our inaugural in in studio for the Peter's Township High School Program.
It's an honor to be here.
Well, this is, this is, like I said, the best program that the township and the the school district puts on together. This has, I've been involved in this for fifteen years at this point and like I said, I've gotten so many compliments. From state senators or we used to have, you know, U S congressmen and everything come in here. And tell me, but this is a better system than the state has or what they've been involved with, but anyhow.
Great, I I've been run out of your school a few times as a wrestling official, so I look forward to referee in here and getting run out of here.
They have a special door for you, but anyhow, Larry, thank you very much for coming and we'll look forward to probably doing this again in the fall. Yeah, I I I foresee that after the election, that there's gonna have to be a little more explanation and and hopefully, we'll see what goes. But we'll talk later, thank you for joining us with Talking Politics in Western Pennsylvania and we'll be looking forward to the next. In-house program, all right, have have a good day.